Good evening, this is the Town of Goffstown Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, May 13th, 2013. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The first order of business is the acceptance and correction of a couple of sets of minutes. The first is the minutes from the April 29th, 2013 meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion from four twenty-nine thirteen.
Motion to accept.
Second.
For the second. Any discussions, additions, corrections?
Corrections?
Yes.
Page four, under twenty-nine.
On the twenty-ninth.
Yes. The last paragraph, two, three, four, five, the sixth line down.
That prior to the, that line?
Yes, where it says, "This $125,000 is the revenue not received."
It should be a hundred thousand.
Page ten. The last sentence of the first large paragraph at the top, where it says, "Selectmen can pass out, added the weight limits on some wheelchairs are pushing 500 pounds." I was referring to the lift has a limit of, the current lift has a limit of 450 pounds, and some electric wheelchairs are topping 200 pounds without batteries.
So, what would you like that to state there then? What would clarify it for you?
The one on the lift.
I added that the limit on the lift is 450 pounds. And some wheelchairs are nearly 200 pounds without, electric wheelchairs are nearly 200 pounds without batteries.
So we should, right, rewind your sentence to say that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's all I had for that, those minutes.
Anything else for the April 29th? See, men, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Now we have the minutes from the May 6th, 2013 meeting.
Motion to accept the May 6th, 2013 meetings.
Motion to accept, in a second.
Second.
We have a second, thank you. Any discussion, additions, corrections?
Yes.
On page four?
Page DC. First sentence said, "But some people may have gone to Grasmea." Some people had gone to Grasmea.
Okay.
Not may, but some people went to Grasmea and did not make the meeting.
Page eight. Second large paragraph down. Sixth sentence from the bottom of that, sixth full sentence from the bottom of that paragraph.
Starting out several years.
Where it starts, he added, should be, I think it should be that Continental has been the contractor for several years.
That's all I have.
On page five? No, I'm sorry, that's okay.
None?
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's fine.
Anything else? All those in favor, accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. I have one announcement that I'll read, perhaps others have other announcements, but let me read this one. This is a news release, effective immediately, dated May 6th, 2013. The Goffstown Police Department announces the parking prohibition dates for the Glen Lake Boat Launch and Waterfront Area Ordinance will be in effect beginning May 15, 2013, running through September 15th of 2013, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Parking along Elm Street in the area of the boat launch and at the Glen Lake School is restricted to Goffstown residents only, and residents must display a resident transfer station sticker affixed to their vehicle. The designated trailer parking only area will remain open to anyone with a trailer attached to their vehicle without restriction year round. There is no trespassing from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. at the Glen Lake Boat Launch Waterfront Area. Alcoholic beverages are prohibited at the Glen Lake Waterfront, along with any glass bottles. The above restrictions are posted at the Glen Lake Boat Launch and Waterfront Area for the public's convenience. Are there other announcements from other members of the board? Thank you. We're a little early for a public comment session. Chief, do you want to?
I can jump in anytime you want.
Sure. Why don't we do you? Long walk tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Seeking to come in front of the board to request you folks to award a bid that we put out several weeks ago. This is in conjunction with the assistance to firefighter grant that we were awarded for a new cardiac monitor defibrillator, and along with the one that was budgeted for in the EMS, current EMS budget. So the RFP went out for new, two new cardiac monitor defibrillators. I've seen your packet that we received two bids from two vendors. There was a, we did receive a request for information from a third vendor, but we did not receive a bid. So with the two bids that they were received, they were quite complete, they met the spec, but one was clearly lower than the other, meeting the spec, so our recommendation would be for the award to Physio Control for the two cardiac monitor defibrillators. Any questions?
Board have any questions on the bid process and awarding of the bid?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Chief, the two units, I noticed that there's $10,000 difference between the two units? Between the two? Well, I know this, it's two. Total is $10,000, or?
Yes.
Units, I assume they're not the same manufacturer, or do these companies manufacture?
They're separate manufacturers. The, they manufacture similar devices, and in this particular case, the Zoll unit was, per unit, was about approximately $5,000 more per unit over the Physio Control unit.
They manufacture their own brands.
That's, that's, yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Any other questions relative to the bids? I guess I'll entertain a motion. If you'd like to make a motion to award a bid?
Motion to accept the Fire Chief's recommendation to award the cardiac monitor bid to Physio Control for $59,864.88.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, it is six-ten now. If there's anybody from the public who would like to address the board, now would be the appropriate time. See, people out there shaking their head no, so I assume that means there's nobody present who would like to comment, so we'll move along then to item number five, which is the acceptance of a donation. Which is at tab five. Let me read it, it's fairly short. To whom I concern, the Goffstown Friends of Recreation, please to make a donation of $389.67 to the Goffstown Parks and Recreation revolving account. These funds may be used as a town deems fit to help offset the cost of the running of the Goffstown Parks and Recreation program. Please note that the Goffstown Friends of Recreation became officially dissolved on May 1st, 2013, and for details and copies of a dissolution form, you can log on to the website as it's noted here. It's been a pleasure of the Goffstown Friends of Recreation to serve our town these past 24 years, and we look back with fond memories for all that was accomplished, very truly yours, Pam Manny, Treasurer of Goffstown Friends of Recreation. It's unfortunate they're dissolving, they've done good work over the years, but apparently they can't see, see to make it go any longer, so that's unfortunate. So, need a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the donation in the amount of $389.67 from the Goffstown Friends of Recreation, through its treasurer Pam Manny, on behalf of the Goffstown Friends of Recreation.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just a comment, and that's to the revolving fund, to the Parks and Recreation revolving grant.
I think that's the only place we can accept it, so that's why I didn't specifically put it in.
We have a motion and a second, within addition. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. And now the Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have your weekly scheduled meetings. Chairman Adams, I understand the Superior Commission meeting tomorrow night, you will not be able to.
That's correct, yes. They're aware of that.
Okay. All right. In consensus folder tonight, you have manifest, the general fund AP in the amount of $1,433,684.73. The cable revolving fund AP in the amount of $257.67. The general fund payroll and withholdings in the amount of $135,454.48. The cable revolving fund payroll and withholding in the amount of $443.75. You have an employee status report form for a call firefighter slash EMT. You have an event permit for the American Legion Wesley Wyman Post Memorial Day Parade. Thank you letters for Glenn Dubois for the donation of guns, and also Pam Manny, Friends of Park and Recreation for the donation accepted this evening. You have the first half property tax warrant and a notice of leave.
Motion to accept the consensus folder?
Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the consensus folder? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. You have a assessor recommendation on an approval of elderly exemption for map 21 lot 97.
Motion to approve the assessor's recommendation.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
The assessor has also prepared a letter regarding the 2013 valuation update, and that's been included in your packet for RSA 76:11 and 76:11-A, the selectmen's approval is required for enclosures with the property tax bill.
Motion to accept. Motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the document to be enclosed with property tax bills? None? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. The next item, you have a bids RFP update on the electricity. We've reviewed the two RFP, or the two bids submitted, from, one from Constellation Energy of Boston, Massachusetts, and the second from Integris Energy Services. On the tab 6E, you'll see that Integris was the low bidder. However, both of those vendors specified that despite our request for the bid being held for 30 days, they were as of the time of bid. It's a commodity similar to our fuel contract, and depends on when we lock in to get it. So, we're requesting authority for the Town Administrator, or I guess in her absence would be myself, to enter into negotiations with the low bidder, to enter into a 12-month contract.
Questions or concerns, or entertain a motion?
Can I make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator or the Assistant Town Administrator to enter into negotiation for the price of electricity with either, either of the suppliers?
Take a second. That motion, thank you. Discussion on the motion?
Is that, would that be for a, what would the term be?
We're seeking, we think 12 months would make the most sense, rather than renegotiate in 18 months in the, in the winter of next year. 12 months would make the most sense.
So you'll negotiate with the lowest one at the day, the day of, the two?
Or three, whichever it is at the, there's technically three.
Only, only two vendors submitted.
Right, but we currently have one, which is a third one.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, in case something were to happen.
Absolutely, okay, understood.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion? A second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. You also have, just to keep you informed, a contract was signed last week on the 7th of May with Dennis K. Burke for gasoline and diesel, on gasoline at $2.96 a gallon and diesel at $3.24.
Okay.
The next item, you have appointments. The Rail Trail Committee recommends the following appointments. Denise Langley and Ray Tabor as two community representatives, and David Pearson, Lowell Von Ruden as Friends of the Greenway Representatives.
Do we need a motion on appointments? Let's present it to us.
I'll make a motion to appoint the four volunteers to the Rail Trail Committee?
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
The Town Administrator has also made a note that typically Brian Rose has served as the administration's rep on the committee for 2013, but she's requesting that she be appointed in his stead for 2013.
Is there any reason for that?
She didn't, she didn't have an opportunity to communicate that to me, so I'm not sure what it is.
Is that time sensitive, is that something we can?
I don't know, is it?
I, I, I think it's probably the first word that you said, time. It might be the amount of time for the planner.
The only thing I can guess is, you know, Brian Rose this year has been doing all the plant in Ardenville project, which has taken a considerable amount of time.
And in my talking with Brian, being a planning board, selectmen's rep to the planning board, I know his, I know his time is, is, is used up a lot, so I don't have a problem with it.
Let the other members be comfortable a little bit, or would you rather wait?
I would just prefer to have a reason, so at least we know what the, I mean, you're probably correct.
I'm telling you what the reason is, in my discussions with Brian.
Okay, so you did speak to him about this. That's, I guess, then I'm fine, as long as somebody has.
He's full.
Has an idea of what the reason was.
Direct knowledge of the reason.
Yeah, his plate, his plate is full, I mean, with, with the Panardville planning, with the Southern New Hampshire planning stuff, along with code enforcement, planning board.
Comfortable with that?
I guess.
You're lecturing yourself?
Yeah, I mean.
Then fine, hold off.
Is our Town Administrator, is that free, that, I mean, maybe there might be somebody, what are the time restrictions?
They, they don't have a meeting scheduled for this week, so I can have Suter bring it back to you at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I'd like to have something for the record. Not that I'd object or doubt that that's actually the case, but if it's not time sensitive, let's just bring it back.
And then the Town Administrator also asked if the Board of Selectmen wants to appoint a selectman representative to this committee.
I wish as a board. Would seem appropriate for, that there be a selectmen's rep.
Yeah, there are quite a few big grants and projects that they're working on.
So I would recommend that we do appoint a selectmen's rep. Is there someone who'd like to serve in that capacity?
What is their meeting schedule?
They generally meet on Friday mornings, I believe it, I'm checking now. They generally meet during the day. Yeah, their, their next meeting is, actually, they do have a meeting, they had one on Friday, May 10th, at 9:00 a.m., so they generally meet on Friday mornings.
That leaves me out.
It'd be kind of hard for all of us, I think, I mean, there's some days I'm available, some days I'm not available, unless we flip-flop around. We put that one on hold and.
How many meetings do you have? I mean, can we team it up, and we can all take, split it up, or what? Friday's a tough day.
It's nice to have a consistent rep, so we can get the carry-through.
Can't throw that muzzle off.
Yeah.
Can we hold this off till next week? I'll check my schedule.
Yeah, looking to certainly do that, why don't we?
And that's monthly?
I'm looking on the calendar, the only one I see on the calendar is the May 10th meeting. I went back a couple months and nothing is popping up, and going forward to June, there's nothing, so I don't know how regularly they meet, but I'll have that information for you next week.
All right. Bring that back on next week's agenda. So we've got two items we'll be bringing back.
The next item is the Historic District Commission recommends the following appointments. Mark Collins and Robert Mahoney as regular members.
Make a motion to appoint Mark Collins and Robert Mahoney to Historic District Commission? Go second there.
Motion and a second, any discussion on appointments? Are you in? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you, and that's all ahead for the Town Administrator's report.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There was a page in our packet, right after the Rail Trail Committee meeting agenda, and then there was a small map with a section highlighted, looks like it's Massborough Great, right in front of Tetro Drive.
So what is this representing, relocation of that portion of the rail trail? I'm not sure, does anybody?
Can't tell what's, can't tell what's working, yes.
What do you need to do with it?
We can check on that as well, I'm not, I'm not certain what that is, and I see by the agenda that they included with the meeting, they had a couple of different items that it might be referring to, but I'm not certain.
Could you look into that first?
Absolutely.
Is intended to?
Yes.
And what action we need to take? Okay, well, we're down to selectmen's discussion. Is there any new business?
Oh, I know. Yeah, well, I think what makes it tough is that this is, this is reversed. At least the copy that's in my packet is reversed, it's like the backside, if you notice. Woodstake and everything is, all the letters are reversed, it's the mirror image, but my recollection is, is that that was the original, and the yellow, do you have the yellow? That goes up, the yellow is, is the diverted, is the relocated trail around the back of the property, and it might have something to do with the language. I see it highlighted, yeah. See the yellow?
Yeah.
Goes around the loop, but there is no explanation of what it, what it actually represents, but.
I don't know what it means. Yep. So we'll get some clarification on that.
Unless that's.
Okay, well, there we, we'll get some clarification, I'm not clear exactly what it is, what it portrays. So is there any new business we want to bring up tonight?
Business, over the past week, we had the Panardville Planapalooza. I would like to, at this time, go on record to thank all of the people who donated food for the committee. It was very well thought out, we had the food that was served by local community, the community, the businesses in town. No complaints, all did very well. I would like to just say thank you very much for your support, and I look forward to, as the Selectmen's rep of the Panardville Planapalooza, continue your support and to work with everybody so that we can have some positive add, some positive changes to Panardville.
Good. Thank you, thanks for your efforts. Anybody else have any business yet?
Just a request, I know budget season comes around very quickly. Would it be possible to request that the Board and the Budget Committee get the department packets, presentations, maybe a week or two in advance, so they have an opportunity to, you know, instead of receiving them either that night of the presentation, so that gives the Board, both Boards, some time to review them. A lot of times you think of questions like the next day, or the day after, after the presentation, where if you had the packet in advance, you may be able to formulate questions.
Makes a lot of sense.
If you don't bring it up now, because we still have some months before.
No, I know you get the budget reports with the proposed budget, but you're saying the presentation.
Yeah, right, exactly, there's a presentation that shows what lines are going up, staying the same with the explanations.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Derek, can you see that that is accommodated? Thank you. Any other new business? How about old business? I see a couple of things on here. Derek, the ADA parking, is there something you want to speak to on that?
I don't have any new information on that, I know that, I believe Suteruso had asked for a report from the School Board as part of the Budget Committee, or not the, the all boards meeting tonight, to see where they stand. I don't know whether or not she had received any information back from the SAU on, on that.
So perhaps we'll hear about that. So perhaps we'll hear about that. I did see, I know, I remember seeing correspondence that they're fine with four additional parking spaces, they just don't want to incur the cost.
Exactly, yeah.
So we'll have to find out how, you know, they'll be paid for, but perhaps we'll hear something further during the all-boards meeting. Selectmen goals. Before we get to that, I wanted to bring up the CMAC on the committee. I know last meeting we approved the makeup of the committee, but we haven't yet approved any appointments. Are there any appointments coming forward? I'd heard that there were some recommendations.
Hi, Carl inquired today, and he said that Sue had received some names. We don't have any volunteer application forms yet, so we can follow up with those people to try and hurry that along for next week.
Get them into the process?
Yeah, get them into the process, but normally we would bring the volunteer application forms forward, but we don't.
Okay, I just wondered where we were. I'd heard some discussions.
Do we know, have we reached out to some of those local businesses in the area?
I can check with Carl and see who he's reached out to. And again, he did say that Sue had-
And I'd like to serve as a selectman's rep, since, you know, I'm the rep to the DPW and live that intersection every day. Okay, good. Well, we'll wait to see those recommendations come forward then. And then, so the 2013 selectmen goals, are we prepared to dive into those some, some tonight, or is that something we want to get on the agenda as an agenda item so that we can?
I'm wondering if that may be easier to formulate, or once we've had this meeting tonight.
Yeah, I believe so.
So that we can try to-
Yeah, sure.
Meld our goals with the town goals.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll come back around to that after we, we hear from the various committees and boards during the all-boards meeting this evening. That's the agenda for tonight, at least as it's printed here. Are there other items that we need to-
You said two, two items I just wanted to check off. Last week, we talked about Spring Street and contacting the cable provider to see about getting that raised. Carl's not here tonight, so I'm not expecting any answer, but I just don't want it to fall off the radar if we could try to get some information for our next meeting. And then the last thing, I was wondering, we talked about having workshops in the, following our meetings. We talked about looking at the whole pay structure, pay matrix, and I was hoping we could put it on an agenda so that we start working on it versus saying we're going to work on it.
Yeah, maybe if we can find an agenda, a night where the agenda's light.
Okay, I know next week you have the presentation on the 293, Exit 6 and 7. The following week would be Memorial Day, so you're off for that one.
Mr. Chairman, could we put it on the agenda tentatively if we end at 8 o'clock or 8:30?
Yeah, no idea along this presentation.
Yeah, so put it on for Monday night and-
Yeah.
Up to you.
Yeah, yes, no. I think that's a good idea. Tentative, we'll see how late, how long the meeting runs based upon the presentation that we're going to receive.
And with Sue out this week, do you have all the information you need for that? Or are you still, is there any other information you need?
No, I think we're just waiting to see the presentation first.
What are we discussing?
No, I was asking for the workshop. You talked about the, the pay structure and matrix, to put that on for next week's. If you put that on for next week's-
Right, as long as the meeting didn't go too long. And I was, you know, thinking in my mind, I don't know how long this presentation is going to go.
And I can, I can ask about that.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
It should last one hour.
Presentation itself?
One hour.
Will take him one hour.
And I think we've scheduled that for 7:00 p.m.
Yes, we have.
And that includes time for questions and answers.
His program should last about 20 minutes, and then the other remaining time should be question, is a question, eight answers from this board or the, or the people we have that come in for the meeting.
And are there any other big items on the regular agenda that you're aware of at this point?
I could run up and see. I didn't get an opportunity to check the folder, but I don't believe-
Well, let's put it on the agenda. If we get time, we'll, we'll, we'll start into it.
And I think we have all the information right now. We don't think we have specific information.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get as far as we can. When we run out of gas, we'll carry it over to the next meeting, or that's available. Okay. Anything else?
I would just like one comment. This weekend, pretty busy in town, waterworks. We had a broken pipe on Mastrode, water pipe on Mastrode. That was handled pretty efficiently, pretty fast, pretty quick yesterday by the Grafton Water Precinct. Things were repaired. You never know except for a nice new patch of asphalt in the road. Things are back to normal. And early this morning, about 1:00, we had a building fire on Elm Street here in town. Job well done. Kudos to the boys with the Grafton Fire Department. Their job well done. Could have been disastrous. Fire in the basement. Luckily, it was caught, ended up time, and the quick action of the homeowners and the fire department altogether, minimal damage. It's a substantial amount of damage caused to the house due to, you know, past response of the fire department. I'd like to send the job well done to the boys.
Well, looks as though we're going to take a break.
The only other item is you do have one non-public under-
Oh, you're right, yes.
Under hiring.
Yep. Yep, we can squeeze that in.
You could probably-
Yeah, we could retire the next door, discuss the non-public.
Motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91A32, paragraph B, hiring.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Is this a roll call vote? I never remember.
Yes, it is.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 And yes.
And myself, yes. So Derek, we're going to go into non-public. I guess we could let the folks at home know that we're going into non-public. We'll be coming back in time for the 7 o'clock agenda item of the all-boards meeting. So if folks want to take a break and come back at that point, welcome to do that.
Good evening, folks.
Before we get to all boards meeting, we did have a brief non-public session. We need to take a motion relative to that, so if you'll indulge us just for a couple of minutes, we need to deal with that little piece of business.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen go with the recommendation of the committee that review the applications for the PEG Gofftown Public TV recommendation, providing a complete background check in the beginnings of the job process.
To make the offer, so that they can accept the offer and negotiate the final terms of employment.
Yep.
If I can add that to the motion, if that's all right?
I'll make a second on that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing on all of the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, folks. Welcome to the 2013 All-Board Meeting. And folks on TV, we've, the boards come back from, we've dispensed with our regular agenda, now we're going to begin the all-board meeting, and we're going to hear from the various commissions, committees, and boards in town, a brief description of where they're at, what their goals and challenges are for the coming year, so that we can all sort of be of the same body of knowledge as we move forward. So, I think what we'll do is simply go around the table, and as we do, if you could introduce yourself, who you represent, and then just provide a brief three, four, five-minute description of, again, what your challenges and your goals are for the upcoming year. That would be most helpful. And then after that, we'll sort of open it up to general question and answer period, and discussion on townwide matters. So, if we can start on my left, with Mr. Gammons.
Oh, okay. I'm Al Gammons, Chairman of the Gofftown Water Precinct, and we, we're a self-funded organization. We're either a district or a precinct, depending on what suits the particular occasion. We have no tax money from the town, and we haven't had a rate increase for quite a while, several years, and we're holding things steady. The former chairman had a saving, sayings. He said, "We do with what we've got." And at budget time, he would come pretty close. That was Gardner Lamson, a lot of you knew him. He was what I call a swamp Yankee. He did a good job. We had an efficiency study done this year with a company that came in and checked our water mains for leakage, to make sure that the water that was coming into service, we were getting the full dollar value of that material. The, I think, three leaks were found. They weren't serious ones, but they were some old pipes. We still have a couple of pipes that are before the turn of the century out there, and we have a budget every year of a certain amount of money to upgrade the system, and it averages around $140,000. And this year, we are going to be working with the Department of Public Works on the project on Pleasant Street. We've started doing some of the work. The toughest part of that is getting beyond the bridge. There's a water pipe, as you walk over the bridge on the south side, you can look down and see the water pipes right there in the water. And we've had a couple of close calls with that deal, but the new water pipe is going to be on the other side of the bridge, and I was assured by the people who put 300 feet of pipe underground, under the brook, that in some places is down 11 feet. So, that isn't going to affect the brook or anything. I was very pleased with that, because I own property right there, and I don't want water places where it shouldn't be. We have a very ambitious program right now, and some of you may have been contacted. We have backflow prevention devices on our systems, commercial and residential, and these usually are good for about 10 years. Some of the early ones were an earlier model. They do need to be serviced or replaced, and in addition to using local plumbers who are skilled and qualified to do that work, both Lee and Mike have taken the training, and they are certified to do it, too. So, we're equipped to get that done, to keep the state happy. That's coming to us from the state. Basically, we, we're on hold as far as expansion of water supply, because several of the developments that we work on are on hold or in different situations that have taken them out of our study. But things seem to be lightening up a little bit, and we, we think that we could be looking maybe three, four years down the road for another water source. I've been talking with the people who own some big piece of land up on the Boston Road, right across the river from the wells that we now have, and we might work out something on that and have some news there. But, pretty much, that's it, colleagues.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jean Walker, Chairman of the Cemetery Committee, and our goal's, of course, always to keep the cemeteries looking nice. Well, mainly, right now, we're working on expansion and we're in the process of having the entryway custom-made with wrought iron, which will exactly match across the street. It's really close to being started, to be erected, and it will be just the entryway with the gate, which will look like the other side. And then we will continue on with the grass in the field, and after we get this part of it done. And also, a big goal is to get money that has And also, a big goal is to get money that has been put aside into unknown funds to pay for the rest of the fence, and hopefully Tucker will be able to do that for us. But, and that will take care, and that will take care of the whole fence, and it won't cost the town anything. Also, for the Conservation Commission, we continue to protect the wetlands and try to advise or give to the planning board and the ZBA things that are developments and things that are being done, and also looking for projects for open space that might be available to us. And also, we have a continuing project on the South Mountain that I'd like Susan to speak to for us.
We have an ongoing project on the South Mountain to open the business again. The trees have become bigger, blocking our views, and we do have some horizon maps up there, so we are continuing this spring and into this early summer to clear some business to Mount Kearsage and to the White Mountains, because the businesses have been growing in. That's just continuing what we had started a couple of years ago.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, folks, is just get a brief synopsis from each of you. If you have questions of each of the different members you want to ask, if you could just jot them down, then at the end, we'll have a, consider an open question and answer period, where we can go back and forth and ask questions from each of the individuals.
My name is Peter Georgiantis, I'm Chairman of the Budget Committee. Of course, our goals are to try to keep the tax rate as affordable as possible, and our challenge is to try to keep the tax rate as affordable as possible. This past year, we did things a little bit different, and we invited more and more people to participate in the process, in discussions when we held our hearings with each department head, and we, unless I hear any different, that's our objective for this year, is to invite people, the department heads, and we even had some of the employees from those departments participate, and keep an open session, open dialogue as we work on the budgets. So, I've got a few colleagues.
Thank you. Revet is not a problem. Yes?
My name is Charlie Tentis. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Economic Development Council. Our 2013 goals are support the Board of Selectmen in the economic initiatives, work with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission to adopt Certified Sites Program, to continue to promote the Goffstown access to I-293, Exits Six and Seven. Some of our challenges, continue to support businesses in tough economic times, and work to encourage the ease of business development here in Goffstown.
Quite a plateful.
Good evening. My name is Richard O'Brien, the Fire Chief for the Fire Department. Just to give you an overview, the Fire Department, we also, we're just not putting out fires all the time, it's only a fraction of what we do. We're more of an all-hazards response organization, where we handle medical emergencies, ambulance services, in responding to non-fire hazards materials and other emergencies. Some of the primary goals that we're looking at for the Fire Department this year is, obviously, we have a, we have a union contract that needs to be renegotiated this year, and we'll be negotiating that with the union this year. Something that we're going to continue to strive to complete would be the fire station improvement process, looking at our three fire stations, and looking to see what we can do to modernize our fire stations and make them so, make them so we can operate efficiently with the amount of services that we provide for the town now. We're constantly looking to upgrade our fire apparatus to meet up with the needs of our response abilities, and we're always seeking out grants for equipment, tools, and even staffing, if it comes, comes to that. So, our plate's fairly, fairly full this, this year. We're, we're once again starting off to be very busy, hall-wise. We're, as we anticipate this to be one of our busiest years, but it's tough to tell until, until we get to the end of the year. So, that's your Fire Department.
Carl Querum, Public Works Director. As usual, we're, we've got a very full plate with road work this year, very involved in the Exit Six and Seven plan that Charlie was, was talking about, and we'll talk, I hope, some more about that later, because we really need you, need all you folks to be coming out to a public hearing very shortly, and I think there's going to be a presentation next Monday, right?
Correct.
Yes.
We're going to be having an intersection project starting. That grant money for congestion mitigation is going to look at the library intersection and the intersection at Pleasant Street. Hopefully, next Tuesday night, we're going to have a public input session where folks can come and talk to the consultants and give firsthand input as to what they see as the issues and problems. This year, we also have, we, we had a study done of the Mountain Base Pond Dam last, last year. The study concluded too late to really get it incorporated into the budget request for 13, but we'll be looking at designing that dam, needs some attention up there on Mountain Base Road, so we're going to be working on that, and that'll also have some pretty heavy public involvement, I would guess, because there are options to look at. And probably the biggest and most significant thing right now, which I hope is not going to be an issue for this year or even next year, really, but we have to prepare for it, is EPA has put out a new MS4 stormwater permit. Since 2003, we've operated under a stormwater permit, and what stormwater is, is our discharge from all of our drainage systems into all our water bodies. The draft that is out there right now is very, very significant from a compliance and cost perspective. We're trying to work through comments with EPA and DES, and hopefully, it'll come, when the permit finally comes out, it'll be a little less onerous than it is today, but that's a draw in a lot of time right now, as we try to get our hands around that and plan our future budget accordingly. I think that probably sums up what we've got going on right now.
That's Sullivan from the Police Department. Some of our goals, first is to update the town's emergency operations plan, which is due to five-year update this year. At the Police Department, we have two labor contracts that are due for renegotiations. Third, we can, one of our department goals is to increase downloadable forms on the Internet on our website. It's a 150% increase we're looking for, we're almost there. With the advance in calls of service that we've experienced, et cetera, we're trying to step away from more officer interaction with the public, or just form transfer rules because of that sort. So, we're trying to work that out. Additionally, we have three community-based goals, which promote both the outreach efforts of the department and formal interaction between the community and the people we serve. Some of the challenges we currently face is experience. Right now, I have, my patrol force has five years of experience on the job, and that's not my supervisor, but everyone below. That's the lowest it's been for quite some time, and that's a concern for me. Manpower, currently, we have a 5% increase in calls since 2008. In 2008, we had 30 officers, we now have 29, and we're handling a 5% increase in calls. That's a concern. Finally, it's the type of crimes that we're seeing. We have 100% increase in armed robberies this year over the entire time of 2012. Armed robberies in there, we're seeing a lot more. While we're just making the arrests, we know it's more out there. We're seeing a lot more opiates out there and prescription drugs that are all over the place, which is some of the concerns we have.
Well, the library has much better stuff to talk about. I'm Tess Marts from the Chairman of the Trustees of the Library, and my first order of business is to apologize for Diane, who put in a full day but is battling illness. Her, her topic to bring forth were the challenges that the library is facing. Like the Police Department, probably like DPW, probably like the Fire Department, we've, we've been at a staffing deficit for too long, and right now, we have one of our key employees out on some extended illness. It's causing difficulty for covering our day-to-day operations. On top of that, we're programming for the busiest in-and-out public usage and public safety time, which is the summer, and it, it really causes a problem. The staff right now, right now, are doing a tremendous job with that, but it's, it's a problem. In addition to just being generally understaffed, we do have, despite urban myth that libraries are no longer all that significant, we have higher usage than ever, and absolutely no space to expand into. There's no space for the collection to expand, not that the budget is making us do a whole lot more with, with materials right now. We have no room for programming. If we have children's programming going on, we can't really have teen programming going on at the same time. If anyone has been to any of the adult programming, there's really no space for that. So, we're in the 21st century, dealing with a turn of the 20th century building, and we love our building. So, those are the challenges that we have. The goals that we have are to, I hopefully, complete the library-specific personnel employee manual. Right now, library personnel share the same personnel manual with all of the other departments in town, and the charges are, are quite significantly different. So, we're trying to get something so that our staff can find their particular clearly and cleanly with their, their library-specific policies in it. We pulled our CIP request last year because we had new information about stuff in our building, specifically lead paint on the exterior trim, and we made a commitment that we would aggressively address a preventive maintenance plan for that building, recognizing that the building is a gem in the downtown area, and it's no longer adequate for our space. We have a CIP plan, I think it might be in '17, for starting on an expansion addition to that building. So, with tremendous collaborative effort between Dave Robert and Jerry Aggett from the School Department, we were able to start getting a handle on what we were talking about for a preventive maintenance plan, and we hope to see that well underway this year. That's the good news. The bad news is, in starting the preventive maintenance plan, we're finding things that are terrifying, like a furnace apparently has a 15 to 20-year life expectancy, and ours is already past that. Good news is, Dave Robert's done a fabulous job, and we're at 85% efficiency. So, so, we're finding gaps in what we have not budgeted for preventatively, mostly because I think our board changes frequently. So, the facility review is underway, and for what we currently have, and we are planning through this year to do site visits to a minimum of three other libraries in New Hampshire that are in a comparable situation space-wise or building-generation-wise to Goffstown, and see how their expansions were done and what they found on that, so that we can come forward with our architectural engineering study requests, to have those be on target. So, that's the library, and summer programming will be wonderful. Please come, though you might have to bring your own chair and sit outside.
Thank you.
I'm Rosemary Garrettson. I'm here representing the Plan Pinnardville Ad-Hoc Committee. We're an ad hoc committee, which means that we only have a one-year lifespan. Hopefully, in March of 2014, you all, along with the rest of the town, will be voting on, hopefully, some new and improved zoning and planning ordinances and regulations that will come out of what we are working on in this particular committee. We just came off of five days' worth of what we called the Planapalooza, which was spearheaded by our consultants, who are out of Tennessee. They did a marvelous job. We had something like 70 people attend our opening presentation with lots of input, excellent input. We had workshops all day throughout the day on, that was on Friday. On Saturday, we had workshops throughout the day, and while I was not able to attend any of them, my understanding is that they were pretty well attended, also with, again, some excellent input. Sunday night, we had an interim presentation to go over what this consultant had been able to pull together out of the Friday and Saturday episodes. Then they worked again on Monday without us, and then Tuesday night, they had their closing presentation. At the interim and at the closing, we had probably 30 to 40 people show up for those as well. Most of what they presented, and I say most, because there was some that was not very well-approved of at the closing presentation, but most of what they presented was very well accepted, and we eagerly await what they are going to do now that they're back in Tennessee, and bring forward to the rest of the committee, which we will find out. I think our next meeting is the end of this month or the beginning of next month. We've been meeting with them by Skype when they're not here in town. They were here, like I said, for five days. They toured not only Pinnardville to get a feeling of what Pinnardville is like, but they came down into the village, they went into Grassmere, they went into Manchester, just to get a feel for the overall flavor, if you will, of what everything is like. So, we're hoping that come the 14th of, of the, March of the, of 2014, that we will have good zoning and, and planning ordinances, that the whole town, not just Pinnardville, will agree, work best for everybody concerned who goes into Pinnardville to live, or to shop, or just to get to Manchester, or Bedford, or Ware, or New Boston, or wherever they're going, because it's one of our main thoroughfares, though. That's, that's Plan Pinnardville.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Charles Hobel, Parks and Recreation Chair. As part of the Parks and Recreation Commission, what we've done is, we established six of our top priorities that we wanted to focus on over the next 10 years. The six priorities are establishing and developing the Barnard Sports Complex, the rail trail, to continue to maintain the rail trail and expand it, and we also wanted to continue to increase the access to the natural resources that we have here in the community, and upgrade our existing parks. We also want to continue the special events program that was begun a couple of years ago, and we also want to continue to look to expand our programs. As far as the Barnard Sports Complex, we are working to secure funding and working to establish our first two fields on that property. We think that that property has a great deal of space, and we would like to continue to look at being able to develop it. It's got a great, it's a great piece of property. The rail trail, again, which I'm sure Mr. Pierce will talk more about, but as part of the Parks and Recreation, I think our people have done an outstanding job continuing to clear that space, make it a wonderful resource in our community that is very, becoming more and more used and utilized, and we are working, again, to maintain that and do, again, a great job to create more access for people in our community. The access to the natural resources is, you know, continue to keep the trails clear in town. in town, access to the trails for, you know, for example, Mount Oconanik, and we have, since I've been on the commission and since Rick has been the director, we have systematically upgraded different parts of our existing parks. The latest undertaking is to pave and re-line the Tracith Barnard Park, working to upgrade the basketball courts, the playgrounds, the tennis courts, continue to keep the fields in top shape at Warrior Street Fields. We are looking to improve the diamond at the Saret Complex. So, these are just some of the things that we are working on to upgrade our existing parks. Special events, some of the special events were begun in conjunction with the 250th anniversary of the community. We'd like to continue to maintain those programs. Block parties at both our parks, Barnard Park and Roy Park, work to get concerts in our parks, those ice cream socials that we hosted, and we would like to continue that, and we have plans to do that this summer. Programmatically, we've established collaborations with the Kentucky River Canoe, and that's been a successful program where people can rent canoes and go around Glen Lake. We've continued to work with our partnership with Gulftown High School Athletics, maintaining our, the fields in conjunction with Gulftown High, the field at Barnard Park. We've continued to work to upgrade and improve, and as I had mentioned earlier, the track piece. And we've also partnered with people to provide clinics and camps. For example, we brought in people to provide a field hockey camp last fall. We have a person who provides tennis lessons for people in the community. We've also run basketball in conjunction with Gulftown High, because we run basketball clinics. And this year, for the first time, we've established a girls' lacrosse youth program to go with our boys' lacrosse program. So, these are just some of the things that we've done to address, again, the six priorities that we've come up with in Parks and Recreation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Willhelmy, Director of Parks and Recreation. All well said.
Thank you.
David Pierce, I'm Chair of the Rail Trail Committee, and our job is to provide recommendations to the selectmen for the development of the trail. Of course, the goal at the end of that is to put ourselves out of existence because the trail's fully developed, and then we can turn it over to the Park and Rec Department as one of their resources for the town. Our recent accomplishments, we have two state grants that will be completed both this month and in June. Those are providing trail improvements on near Lynch, Dennis Park Road through Morgan Circle, the Lynchville Park Road. By the end of the month, some trailhead parking will have been built, and some minor landscaping will be completed, and then we'll ask the state for reimbursement of the cost through the grant. Also, another recreational trails program grant from the state will provide trailhead improvements at Moose Club Park Road and minor improvements at three other trailheads. That project is, will be contracted to a local, well, has been contracted to a local firm, and will be completed by the middle of June, and once again, by the end of June, we'll ask the state for reimbursement of the cost. The big grant project that's been on our radar scope was a federal transportation enhancement grant awarded in 2010, so the key word here is patience, because it's moving rather slowly. As in many large projects, you have engineering studies, preliminary design, final designs, and then construction. Well, we are just about approaching everything that's required for engineering study, and a related item in Phase One was National Environmental Policy Act requirements that requires us to look at the historical nature of the rail corridor and study those historical features and hopefully not tramp on them too hard, so that we won't have to spend more money. But those studies take time. Once we're proceeded, once we're allowed to go into preliminary design and final design, there'll be public hearings for the contractor to announce recommended designs for the, for the projects through this grant, and then I, the grant is to provide safe crossings of Mass Road, two of them, a safe crossing of Henry Bridge Road, and then to carry the trail over the gully that was left from the former location of Henry Bridge Road. Challenges are to complete the trail. We've had one setback this year. We've had a successful run of getting six state grants in a row, six annual grants, and this year, we struck out. We were asking for a little bit under $20,000. The match, I hope that the match would have been a winning points for us, because the match was a totally private contribution to the town. However, as in most grants, it's a competitive process, and we didn't get enough points to receive the money from the state. That project's design will be pulled off of the rear burner at some future point and I'd take advantage of the opportunity for education for the public, and in my final notes, I just want to make clear that Manchester, this summer, will proceed into the construction of a trail bridge over the Piscataquag River at Kelly Falls. It'll be a single-span steel structure. Important to this town is that all of the wooden piles that are supporting the old railroad trestle will be removed. This is Manchester's last connection of allowing city and regional visitors to come on to the trail system here in Gulfstown and hopefully visit our businesses and enjoy recreation in our town. We already know of Gulftown residents that will be commuting by the rail trail to their employment in Manchester, and that's taking cars off the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Diane McCarthy. I'm Chair of the School Board. As I think a lot of you know, this is a huge year for us. We have several pieces of transition that we are dealing with. Superintendent Barclay is leaving us of June 30th, so we have been in the process of looking for a new superintendent. Our viewpoint is, of course, that this is an extraordinarily important decision and one that we are not taking lightly, and making sure we take our time with it. We are coming to a close on the process and hope to have an announcement in fairly short order, which is good. Likewise, we are in the middle of a principal search for our Mount Oconanik School. That process is a little bit more in the early stages, but they are looking to have that wrapped up within six weeks, I believe, if I have the timetable. They're currently in interviews, and within a few weeks, we expect to be meeting with some candidates at the board level. We're also looking at Dunbarton's withdrawal from the area agreement and what that will look like in the coming years. Of course, that contract expires or ends in June of 2014, so there is a lot to be looking at as far as how that process takes place, how we handle the loss of revenue, and if we can find revenue elsewhere. We have approached HOCSAT, and we'll see where that goes. Teacher contracts, we are negotiating teacher contracts this year as well, as we are support staff contracts, and we continue to wrestle with the space issues at both of our elementary schools. And that sums it up for us.
You beat the police station.
We are having a banner year. I mean, this is, I'm not sure there has ever been a year in the board's history that we have, that they have had to wrestle with as many major transitions and issues as this year.
Certainly some major challenges.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Hootner, and I am the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Administration and a Sewer Commissioner. On our agenda so far this year, I would say that we need to revisit the language of the zoning ordinance regarding chickens. And I do say that because we are on our third year, but there was some problem with getting an article through in March because of some language issues, and I'm hoping that that, those will be rectified in the new coming year as your chairman. The other thing that I feel that as a zoning board, we will go forward, is to look at the recommendations when they come forward from the Planapalooza down in Pinnardville. I attended most of the workshops that they had down there, and I was very impressed with the consultants. I was extremely impressed with the boots-on-the-ground efforts that they did and the quality of the presentation and the work that they did for this town and in that area. Just to enlighten you, there was, people are talking about an issue that had to do with the one-way streets. That was one of four major presentations that they summarized. They did a very good job with what they took from the town, presented to the town, and will present in, I think, five to eight weeks, and to the committee. And Rosemary and her committee did a wonderful job. Rails to Trails was part of that. It was very much an issue, and the thing that, from a zoning board side, that we will probably be paying most attention to, is they were taking the five existing zoning areas down in Pinnardville and incorporating them into three different zoning areas, so that we would not have as many issues to contend with, and it will be interesting to review that as a board, to see in their verbal presentation as to what they would suggest those ordinances to be. So, those are things that I see on the plate for the zoning board in this coming year. As a sewer commissioner, I represent the sewer users on our municipal sewer line. We were fortunate over the past year, well, this past few months, with the help of the Department of Public Works to finalize the, our funding grant up at the State of New Hampshire, which enabled our town to replace, with the help of DPW, the infrastructure down in the Pinnardville area at a very low cost to the sewer users, and was a win-win for the town with being able to coordinate with us the drainage down there, and we just finalized that this year. It is, it is, it is our responsibility and charge to make sure to continue and administer the repairs and the maintenance of the infrastructure of the municipal sewer line on behalf of the sewer users, and to make sure that they are done in conformance with the codes that the state has for us to follow. Upcoming, we will be working on the sewer connection with the Moose Club Park, multifamily development that is going on down there. We will be looking at sewer use fee reviews, and we will continue to consider how the funding for the CIP projects as planned in Manchester are going to be funded over the next 20 years. So, those are our upcoming items of concern.
Thank you.
Hello, Jason Cody from the Chair of the Cable Committee, as he's a wonderful, very creative sign, points out there. Love him. That was a great job. We had a...
I did those.
Sue, okay, there you go.
But I did Rosemary.
The Cable Committee had a very busy year. Last year, we came, I came to the board and said we're looking for dedicated funding. We were looking at trying to get a full-time person, and with the support of past and current selectmen, we have, and the citizens of Gulfstown, that actually happened. So, we actually have a dedicated amount from the franchise fee or tax, whichever way you want to say it, and we are now in the process of hiring a full-time coordinator in the next, probably the next month. I would say the person will probably be on the job, so that's going to be very exciting to do, and the, at the same time, the cable access, the cable contract was finalized and approved at the last Board of Selectment meeting, which allowed now the cable station, government TV, or Gulfstown TV, will now be able to go live from the media center at the high school, the auditorium, the gymnasium, the press box at the softball field, and the press box at the football field. So, that's going to be very exciting. And now, with a full-time coordinator, that person will be visiting a lot of the directors in the town, and we're working with them to bring publicity, positive publicity to the, what's going on, what happens, and how people are spending taxpayer money. We're very excited. Programming will increase. The quality will increase at GTV. I guarantee that, and if it doesn't, then you guys next year can sit there and say, you know, tell me exactly why not. So, but besides that, that's what's been happening for this year, and we're very excited for the new things that are going to happen in the next coming year.
That is it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Heikel. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. This is my third year on the Planning Board. We have a dynamic group this year. We've got, for the first time, I think, we have all of the extra positions filled as well. So, we had a lot of interest in the Planning Board this year. We have a lot of experience there. We have a dynamic group of folks who are looking to move the town forward. We're one of the few committees that actually helped to increase our tax base through, through expansion, through development, through careful planning, and this can all be beneficial to the community in the form of increased tax revenue. But we can do that only through less regulations or fair regulations to the applicants. We kind of go by the motto that Gulfstown is open for business, and please bring your applications to the Planning Board. I'm also on the Planapalooza, the Plan Pinnardville Committee, and I certainly enjoy doing that. We spent a lot of time this past weekend checking out the possibilities for the community. A lot of great ideas came out of that. Can't wait to see how we can implement them. Nothing is carved in stone. It's certainly up to all of us to contribute ideas of how Pinnardville can be a larger asset to the community of Gulfstown than it is right now. We want to, we want to look at some things. Impact fees will be one of the things we'll be looking at this year that I'll be concentrating on, and just making regulations easier and more accessible to more people, so we can have a plan for the future. There are some areas, one on 114, or two on 114. One is around the St. Anselm's Corner, for instance. There's a large parcel of land there that's available. There's a large parcel of land there that's available. We just need our economy to improve a little bit. We have one across from the Irving Station, for instance. There are several houses there in a commercial zone that are ready to go or ready for somebody to come in with some great ideas. We have Goffstown Back Road, a very large industrial park there that has been neglected for, I don't know, 20 years or so. It seems like a long time. And I'd really like to do something with that. It's going to take some working with Manchester to make a few changes on that. So we have a lot of plans coming and a lot of things happening. I look forward to helping that move along. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your presentations. Were there specific questions you might have had or did you jot down that you would like to bounce off folks?
I'd like to hear the selectmen's vision for what their plans for the year.
Well, I'm going to flip that around on you, Peter, because we intentionally wanted to hold this all-boards meeting before we got too far into establishing our goals for the year because we wanted to hear what your goals were. Obviously, there's a lot going on out there. A lot of big initiatives that are contemplated, that are in the works, various stages of completion or design or however you want to describe them. So it does us a great deal of good to hear all of this. It's being videotaped. We'll transcribe that so that we can consider those as we put together our goals, given what we've heard and limited resources. We all know that we're dealing with limited resources, so that's part of our challenge as a Board of Selectmen is to hear the concerns, hear the needs, hear the challenges, hear the goals, and try and put them together in some sort of priority, working with the CIP and all the other tools that we have available to us. So we haven't gotten that far yet, and that's by design. But you'll be hearing about it. You'll be hearing more about this.
Sure I will.
For sure. Because we've certainly heard a lot tonight. I mean, there's a lot going on this time. There's a lot of great ideas. There's a lot of energy. There's a lot of challenges before us. The trick is to try and figure out how to best address these, how to prioritize them, how to fit them within a budget that works, that doesn't increase the burden on taxpayers unreasonably, certainly is one of the goals. So we've got a lot of work cut out and before us for the next coming months. Were there other questions that folks wanted to bounce off from other people after hearing the presentations?
I got a question for John. John didn't address CIP much. What is the plan for CIP? Do you have any ideas?
I have some ideas. We have, we appointed Mr. Tarnant, the liaison to the CIP. So he's going to be sitting in and hearing what it is and as soon as he has something to report back.
As a liaison, I'm confused because the CIP is part of the Planning Board. I mean, so it's really not a liaison.
Actually, he's going to be the Chair of the CIP. Yes. But he's, yes, he's new, so he's going to be the CIP Chair.
Do members of the Board of Selectmen have questions for any of the representatives of the various committees?
Perhaps John would like to explain what he meant when he touched on impact fees.
Well, they, we've heard from both sides. Sometimes we, people say we need more and developers seem to think that we need less. So we want to make sure that they're fair. And if we are going into a time, I think we're at a, I think we're at, if there's a bottom, I think we're, hopefully, we're close to that place. And hopefully, from here on, somewhere, we're going to start seeing some decent increases. And until we get a lot more applicants coming through the door, we may want to be very careful not to, we want to be very careful, we want to place, make sure that these impact fees are placed in a way that doesn't discourage development coming to town. And it seems so far it's potentially, that has, that has happened. We want to just make sure that it's fair for all in the development.
Other comments or questions from members of the Board of Selectmen to the various Any other questions from you folks that you want, or concerns that you want to share as a last minute? We certainly appreciate you taking the time out to come down here and share with us your goals and challenges. They're substantial. And it's certainly good to hear them because oftentimes you hear bits and pieces. This is a great forum to bring everybody together to hear the totality of the issues that folks are dealing with in town here. It's a great opportunity for us to at least see some faces, associate faces with the various efforts and know what the challenges are that you're all dealing with. It's certainly going to help us as we, as a Board of Selectmen, try and set our priorities and our goals for the upcoming year. It's not an easy challenge, as you can, I'm sure you can imagine, when you're dealing with things like school expansions and fire department expansions and...
Library expansion.
I got you.
Number three is as far as I go.
One other thing, as we've all shared, the initiatives and goals that we're all seeking from this meeting, will each one of these committees be able to get a copy of this evening's notes?
Yes, we'll make that available, absolutely.
Because I think that's good as an overall team.
I agree.
That we can, you know, we may come upon a situation that we can help each other.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be beneficial.
As I say, we will transcribe the videotape from the meeting and capture, you can see the various goals and challenges and concerns of the various committees, boards, and commissions. So you can all have it in front of you. And it'll be impressive to look at, you know. It's good, it'll be good to have it in front of you, a hard copy, to figure out how we're going to wrestle with all of this.
If I could, I was going to just touch upon that building expansion. That's probably one of the toughest issues we're going to face because we look at the fire department needing to bond stations, the library needing potentially to bond an expansion, the school system needing to bond expansion. I'm sure at some point, the police department's going to need more room. We've got the athletic fields. If we just bond something and then we wait five or six years or seven and then bond something else, I mean, somebody at the end of the line is going to be waiting 60 years. So that issue really needs to, people need to get together and try to coordinate, how do we tackle all of that in a comprehensive manner that doesn't break the budget, but yet at least addresses all of these issues in a timely fashion? Because we keep pushing and pushing and there's just so many of them.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just say something on that. This is where I think the planning of what, of how we're going to, when I talk about impact fees, when I talk about increased planning and expansion of a town, the more that we can properly plan and make it, make it, make Goffstown more accessible to people to want to come in here and develop, the less bonding we may need to do if we can raise more money through reasonable tax increases through development, for instance, and through, and through expansion of our properties.
And ideally, not losing our quality of community.
And not losing our quality of community. And that's all part of a real comprehensive planning that the experience on our board, Phil and Barbara and Mark, Richard, Chris, myself, and the altements, we're going to put together. So we don't want that to happen. We like Goffstown. We like Goffstown. We like the feeling of how it feels to live here. The more we can bring in, the less bonding. And bonding is a borrowing money and that's a scary thing.
And in fact, in order to attract more businesses, we need the infrastructure. We need to extend our municipal services, our sewer, our water, our electric, our natural gas, out into other areas, and that will probably require bonding as well. So again, it's a tug-of-war for the dollars, but how do we best tackle that as a community working cooperatively? You know, can we, can we bring together resources for a common goal to try and get things done? I mean, it's going to take some really well-thought-out planning and financial management, for sure. Carl, did you?
I was just going to kind of add on to what Selectman Campisano said, and that is, these are big future things, but anybody that's been involved in the budget process over the last several years knows the iron balloon waiting to burst already from projects that are needed that have been deferred, deferred, deferred. So all of this expansion is on top of, so it, you know, I really think that as a community, we need to, that's probably one of the biggest issues we've got, is a realistic look at the needs of the community, existing and future. We can't focus on the goods' future without...
Maintaining what we've got.
We look at what we, the current needs are as well.
Yes.
Well, I'm just commenting exactly on that. I'm probably, I've only been in the community for eight years, probably much less than everybody else here. But I was here last year and that's exactly what the whole conversation, 90% of the conversation that was dripping last year with CIP projects and exactly how we're going to spend that money and what we have to do here and what truck we're going to buy and do this. So yeah, I'm just, just as a perspective, watching what you guys are saying and what you're doing, if some of us isn't chipped away, one of these years is just going to be horrendous and tough enough to pass these things as they come along because just if anybody's walked through the Bartlett School, just going to mention that, that's, you know, it just hasn't passed. And these things hopefully can be chipped away before it gets too big to even comprehend.
It's going to take a lot of cooperation. It's going to take a lot of public education and outreach so that people understand how we have to approach this, not only maintaining what we've got, but then building upon what we've got. Because certainly if we're dealing with default budgets year after year after year because everything's getting voted down, then obviously we're not getting the message out or people just are speaking purely with their wallets. But, so there's a lot of moving parts that all need to go together.
And hopefully GTV can help you guys get that message out.
We are looking forward to that.
Yeah. Just to add on to that, I do think that one of the biggest challenges we face as a community is our tax base is so heavily residential. Not that I do want to threaten our sense of community or whatnot, but we're still looking at 94.6 or 93.7, and that is very difficult because all of this is coming straight mostly from residential taxes. And for myself, sitting in this chair, I am reminded of the development that's going in a Moose Club Park and I kind of want to beat my head against the table because I don't know where these children are going to go should they be Bartlett students. It's Bartlett District. I guess we'll find another, you know, it's just, it's very challenging. And there's no question that the, you know, taxpayers and the voters are really looking to be very, very careful. And that's real. And I do think as a community, we would be well-served to look a little bit more into how we can diversify our tax base, improve our infrastructure, and see what we can do about changing that. I do, I see that as one of our most major challenges as a community. No question.
Yeah, there's no question if we build the infrastructure, they'll come. I mean, we've got a fairly good transportation system here for bringing, you know, commercial business off of 101 and down 114. But again, without the infrastructure, a lot of these businesses aren't interested. I mean, they're going to go someplace where they've already got sewer and they've already got water, they've already got gas, and it's ready to build. So that's a big challenge. Kathy?
With that comment, I will say that over the past weekend, when I was at the Plana Palooza, one of the visions is for them to have connectivity between Shaw's and Hannaford's. With all of that have, being small stores, new commercial industry, focusing on conservation and the reparation of the stream that goes there to make it presentable. This is a plan that's going to be in front of you in a couple of months that has very, very good ideas on how to bring additional, good-character zoning and industry into the Pinnardville area, incorporating rails and trails. It was a, once again, it was a phenomenal presentation. I strongly suggest that when you look at, when everybody here looks at it, definitely look at the idea that they are bringing, they are looking to bring additional revenue on a commercial side into our community to help offset those property taxes that we all sit here and can't get what we want accomplished because we don't have that revenue. So it will be, I'm sure you'll find it to be very exciting to see.
Looking forward to it.
Very good.
Yes, John.
Asking for Parks and Rec, they talked about the canoes on Glen Lake. Goffstown, we all know, has a lot of resources in trails and the rail trail is a great asset, bike trails, but are those canoes and is access to the lake in that area open to every, I mean, outside the community or?
Anybody that wants to drive by and rent a canoe or paddleboard or kayak is more than welcome to do it.
Great. So we can bring, okay.
More than welcome. They, right now, they have, Kanuket River has it set up so that it, they have to stay on that location, so they have to be on Glen Lake. You know, maybe down the road, you might be able to rent them and take them to down to the Namaski Lake, you know what I mean, to get more access to Namaski. But I think the challenge with Namaski is you don't have a lot of real, true public access to the lake. You have a public boat launch that's owned by a private individual that is, it's a private individual that owns the land, but everybody uses it. So, you know.
The only other one is on the Manchester side as a launch.
Yeah, the other one, yeah.
That makes it difficult.
So if we can find more, more access there, that would be good, too. That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother nice little lake down there.
Sure is.
Peter?
You know, I sit in the Budget Committee meetings, I go through line by line through all the budgets, and I know how hard the Budget Committee works. But then when we get something like we had last year from the state, which, you know, kind of stuck us pretty bad. And I understand that possibly there could be some more coming down from the state that they're not going to pay for any longer.
Wait till you see what's coming from the Fed.
Well, I mean, and we can all laugh about it, but then, you know, Carl, we see what's coming from the state, the state, and then all of a sudden, you know, the chief doesn't get his fire station improvement and we don't get Bartlett upgraded and, you know, that type of stuff doesn't happen because the expenses that are being downshifted are killing us. Now, you know, I think we need to send a message, however, through John and the rest of our representatives in saying, this isn't working for us, you know. We need more school funding. We need building aid. We need more grants from somebody and we need to get the message out as a community that, hey, we can't afford this anymore, whether it's at the ballot box or through our legislatures or something. Because I can tell you at the Budget Committee level, last year, they were pretty reasonable, but I got the feeling when we got done that they weren't happy with what happened. And I did, I got the feeling at the beginning, they're not going to go for that kind of an increase again. And it's going to be huge and I think it's really going to be sad this year. Go through with the Budget Committee.
No question, and the downshifting's hurting us a lot. So like I said, it's just another one of the moving parts. I'm going to get to Carl, then I'll come back over here.
Well, just to, just to add on that, and again, I hope this current EPA permit, we're successful at altering a lot of it, but what we're seeing is just what Peter was saying manifested. The federal government has been cut, so they can't do what they need to do. It's been pushed to the state. The state's been cut. The way this permit reads, if you read between the lines, they've just pushed everything down to the local community. We're now responsible for enforcement. We're responsible for watershed management, even though the watersheds span three or four or five communities. We're going to have to start trying to work regionally, which in New Hampshire is not an easy thing to do because communities are all so independent. And, you know, we really, it's going to, if it stays, it's going to cause us to have to really shift our thinking to a more regional, we're going to have to cooperate with our neighboring communities. We're going to have to work together. You know, the GTV, I don't know how good you get along with BCTV, but Bedford's already been talking to me about trying to put together a show to start educating the citizens in Bedford as well as Goffstown and Manchester. And that's the kind of stuff we're going to have to do. So I think it's a great point, Peter, and it, it's a squeeze.
John?
Thank you. Just to touch on that budget, I wasn't going to talk about state stuff here, but it came up.[1799.83] Um, I voted on that budget. Um, this was one of the first ones where we actually ended up with a real surplus. We actually voted on a state budget that, um, uh, that we had, we, we knew that federal money wasn't gonna be there, and we knew that things were gonna be tough. The good news is we spread the pain throughout the state, we didn't just, uh, we didn't just drop it off here in Goffstown. So the good news is that we spread it throughout the state, everyone gave up a little bit possibly, but I think if you'll see the, the numbers that were actually spent were money that we brought in. Uh, normal governors' budgets and normal repres- houses' budgets usually balance that budget, which is constitutionally mandated, on anticipated revenues, and when that happens and the revenue doesn't come in, we all know that taxes are gonna go up. It didn't happen this time, we actually balanced the real budget on real money that we had. Um, so the, the, the pain, uh, we can't say it didn't happen, but we, um, you know, we hope that we'll make it through it and um, it was the only thing that we could do other than keep driving us, uh, deeper and deeper in debt. And I think we made the right decision last year. This is a new budget coming up, and we'll see. We'll see how much more you'll have to spend this year.
I have two completely divergent question and a comment. Um, the first question is, um, kind of along the lines of Peter's question about your goals. If we're talking about this, the town budget and we're talking about the state shifting, and we're talking about combining with other communities that are adjacent to us, I never hear anything from our county reps. I know there's a county budget, I know there's money in it, and I know there's county property that is a big corner here. Were they invited here? Do we know anything about what they're doing for us?
No, they weren't invited here that I'm aware of, Derek.
Good, 'cause we don't wanna hear.
They, they weren't invited, we didn't invite our, our state representatives nor congressional delegation either, but so it was kinda an internal opportunity to discuss internally what our, our challenges are, so. It's a first step.
Well, we, we have this meeting annually.
We do.
But that, i- if, I, I, I often wonder what happens as a result of this meeting. We ask our department heads to come out, just like, yes, 'cause it's not budget season. But they spend a lot of hours and I, and I don't know where, I don't know what we get from it. Um, so it, it might be, I would really like to know a little bit more about the county activity and how it affects us and how we can be more assertive with our needs from the county.
And I'm sure our planning board and planning department is hopefully engaging with them.
We are, and.
I'm talking financially, and I don't, I don't know how that correlates.
That, I can just tell you that, um, that the Hillsborough County delegation, um, the state representatives are the county, are the county, uh, well, we have county commissioners, but the state representatives wear two hats, we also sit on the county boards also, so the county budget is made up of, uh, is made from, uh, state representatives as well. So, we all meet several times throughout the year to come up with a county budget. Most county budget money that's spent is, um, most county budget money that's spent, um, is labor, and.
The most town budget money that's spent is labor, most state, but, I mean, that's.
Correct. Now, is it, uh, is it dupli- is it duplicative? Uh, some people would argue that it may be. I'm not sure, but we, we also set up that county budget last, last biennium as well, and this will be a new one that they'll be, that we'll be voting on, um, um, this fall, I believe. So, the representatives are actually the ones that handle the county budget. And we have a, we have a, we have a budget committee for the county as well, and they're made up of state representatives from Hillsborough County.
Okay, I still don't really get it.
I don't either.
But, but that, but I, I don't think I'm gonna get it from this meeting, and I'm gonna toss that back to you guys as you determine next year's agenda, maybe maybe you can move forward, helping us understand that and seeing if there's a way we can harness that. So let me go off to my other point, and that is, um, when I came in saying we all represent little individual places and we all have huge needs, it would be grossly unfair to not say how much each of the departments do for at least our little departments. I assume you get the, the same kind of assistance and courtesy from police, fire, DPW, from town hall and support, um, and from the school. It's, um, I can't say enough for how much the people who are working for the town are working double and triple time to try and make every rubber band stretch across a whole room. It's, it's remarkably nice to, to live in that environment and to see what they do for us.
Thank you for those comments, yes.
Carlos, I, I really think it would be better for the town if we took a different look at this situation. A few years ago, we had George Bald come down, he was, you know, what his position was. And he told us that we did not shine well in the commercial market. That, uh, people who were looking for commercial operations would look around and see some sort of limitation, be it a high rental because of the tax on commercial property, or lack of water in that area, or lack of sewer, or inadequate electricity, or he just, uh, he, he beat the daylights out of us. And we pretty much agreed he was right. A lot of years ago, um, a very well-known, um, cup manufacturer wanted to build a plant down in Grassmere. And, um, they wanted a certain-sized water line, they wanted a certain-sized sewer line, town, town told them, we can't do it. And that was a, a great industry that was, was lost. But I think some consideration needs to be given to something to support commercial, uh, development. You drive around this town, you see a tremendous amount of empty commercial buildings. Mill buildings that have been empty twenty years. Uh, stores that are empty now and some have been empty for a long time, restaurants that have, have been closed. Um, these things, they just, uh, they just happened and, uh, everybody looks the other way and goes somewhere else. And, uh, nothing is being done. If the town had a way of coming up with some sort of a program where they would either assist the owners of the buildings with a, a tax break for, uh, for doing something positive, um, so that their rent could be reduced, uh, to somebody coming in, give them a break for two years or, you know, that's how industries are brought over state lines, by, by doing all kinds of things. I know New York City is spending millions of dollars on something that I think is kinda funny because a tremendous number of people have left New York. And if they're turning things over, hooray for them because it's, uh, long overdue. And I think we need to do something along the same lines, something positive, 'cause you can only get so much blood out of a rock. And, um, as, as Peter said, he, uh, he thinks that, uh, we could have a riot here if, uh, uh, things didn't, um, appeal, appeal to the taxpayers of the town. And I would like to see something done of a positive nature, uh, to fill up some of these buildings and get, uh, some things in town and, uh, bring more support of that nature. And there are construction projects, I know, uh, I think four that we have on hold at the waterworks, where for financial reasons, they haven't gone ahead. Uh, I think two of them are now for sale. And, uh, all four of these did get started with, uh, great hope and, uh, all kinds of things. We reserved water capacity for them. And, um, nothing's happening. And here's, here, here we are, probably three years down the road at least on some of these projects, and, uh, they're just sitting there. So, I, I know that we have an industrial council, I used to be on it, uh, years ago. And, uh, I know that some, some sort of action needs to be taken of a positive nature to bring things along, create employment, uh, that's one of the side benefits of, uh, of this type of thing. So, I'll throw that out.
In, in response to that, with the Economic Development Council in trying to really work with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, as Carl was saying, we need to get creative now, and, and trying to do these regional things with other communities and, and, and coming together as a team, is looking more closely at the Certified Sites Program. Is trying to come up with ideas and ways to streamline the process for these individuals and potential businesses to come here and not have to deal with a lot of red tape. And, and as, as you were saying, Carlos, about having the infrastructure in place, that the gas is there, that the utilities are there, that the water and sewer is there. And as we build some of these blocks, uh, that we can then attract, attract these types of businesses to the community to help offset that ninety-four-six ratio that we're seeing. But like anything, Rome wasn't built in a day, and it will take time and being creative. And it may be being creative with the other communities around us as we work together, not against each other. The other thing I see, and I've lived here in town almost twenty-eight years, we do have some limitations. Um, if that exit six and seven comes to fruition up on I-293, that's gonna open up that whole industrial park area and other areas up around Station Seventeen, uh, for the fire department, where we may have more residential, but also more business opportunities. So I think if some of those building blocks can go into place, those other things can then fall into place as we still move along and get creative, not only on our own, but working with the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and other communities around us. So those are one of, some of the things we're trying to do, and, and get creative, and also with the Planetpalooza. Uh, I was there on Friday night, I was there at the closing ceremony, I thought it went very well, there was good representation with, uh, individuals from Pernodville. Yeah, there were some issues with dead-end streets and not wanting to connect them, and I can understand that for the homeowners that live there. But I also think that there are a lot of good ideas that came from that session, that think tank, so to speak, that could really, um, fall into place, as I had mentioned on Tuesday night, that could be small victories that could lead to large victories, not only for Pernodville, but for all of Goffstown. And I think when the business community sees some of those small victories, uh, that take place in Pernodville, they will then see community pride, they will see unity, and they will wanna be a part of it. And I think that will happen, but we all have to work together, and, uh, it's gonna take time. But the building blocks are there.
Um, I, uh, I've worked in Manchester TV for about fifteen years, and I've seen more planning and zoning, more board meetings than I would ever like to talk about. But, um, the, uh, the big thing, um, yeah, right now is, uh, um, is, uh, targeting certain areas and just saying, looking at Goffstown, I, I can't speak to the, the different areas, but I assume that if you sat down and looked at a map of Goffstown and, and said, you know what, this is the most cost-effective way, this piece, parcel of land, you know, these fifty, seventy-five acres would be the best for, cost-wise, to get sewage and water to, and they, they are dumping in resources to develop that one single parcel. Not negating other places, but just more or less concentrating their, their resources on that and trying to develop and make partnerships with, uh, larger businesses, um, such as, you know, you know, you talk fifty thousand square feet, twenty-five thousand square feet facilities that you can target, and as they come in, you can make, um, three, four, five-year tax breaks, but you're also committing a twenty-five-year, so you're gonna make your money on the back end. And that seems to be what is, been happening in a lot of the other communities, and also the expansion at the airport, um, which is an astronomical project that Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission and the larger communities are involved in. Um, but that might be something that Goffstown might wanna look at. I, like I said, I don't know Goffstown well enough, uh, and that, and the commercial end of it, but that might be what might wanna be targeted, 'cause it's more cost-effective and you can, uh, induce stuff from that.
Well, certainly a lot of these issues have been looked at over the years.
Sure.
The planning board has struggled with this mightily, and it always comes back, really to the, to me, as an engineer, who's done a lot of work in, in engineering work in this field, it comes down to the infrastructure. You know, you've gotta have the infrastructure. We can open up a new exit six and seven and bring access into the northwest corner of town, but if we don't have any infrastructure there, alls we're doing is opening up for residential development. That's all we're doing. So it does take a lot of coordination, a lot of planning, and it's gonna take somebody to come up with a big chunk of change to make it happen. It's a real challenge. Peter, and then we'll go over.
Okay, that, I guess that was my next question, and we, we've heard the same thing from numerous people, that we need to bring in infrastructure. Well, how does that happen? Who does that? Uh, St. Age's and one fourteen Phil, how many people have talked about developing that over the years?
How long have we been working on it?
But nothing's happening. And how does that, how does that get pushed? How does that get out, get done?
If I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Some of the things that we've looked at in the past have been brought up here. When you look at that and you try to get that developed, uh, this was even before the one on the back road was where it is right now. The issue that we always look at is you gotta get water and you gotta get sewer there. How do you get sewer there? We've had two different ways of trying to bring the sewer in. One was having it come up one fourteen from Pernodville, another way was having it bring up, brought up over St. Age Drive. The problem you have is the cost of that project. By the time you divide it up with the parcels that you have in that industrial park, and the number that you come up with to get somebody there, they can go to Manchester, they can go to Bedford, and they can buy the pad, get the pad all ready with the approvals, water, sewer, ready to go, for a lot less money. And that's the difficulty that we've had.
And as, where lies the question is, how does it get done? And we can talk about it all day. Never gonna get done, because, you know, honestly, the, we don't have two cents to rub together, really. I mean, you know, we, we couldn't afford a project like that, it would, it'd be huge.
We need an anonymous donor.
Huh?
We need an anonymous donor.
Yeah, well, probably to the tune of.
I wanna go to Kathy, she's, she's anxious to comment.
First of all, I do wanna comment about the sewer, um, as an issue with the property that is the end of St. Anselm's Drive. Um, we do have a dry sleeve that goes from the intersection of one fourteen, one fourteen A up to St. Anselm's Drive, that's already in there. The only, uh, cost would be, of course, the line to go, to go to that piece of property. Uh, my understanding is that Market Basket paid over a million dollars for their connection in Bedford. I would find that the connection that would have to be going from that piece of property that we're talking about to the one fourteen would be less expensive than that, considering we have the dry line there. Having said that, what I consistently hear at these meetings, um, and I haven't been to one of these all boards meetings for a few years, is the same issue, which I feel comes back to the point of everybody that's on the committees that makes the decisions about the economic infrastructure in this town, most of them have another job. Most of them have someplace else they need to go to forty hours a week at least. How much time does that leave them proportionately on a weekly basis, or whatever basis you wanna put it on, for them to spend quality time marketing Goffstown? Looking for industry? Asking them to come and talk to us? I do not deny you that every person that's sitting in this room, number one, is probably the top volunteers that we have in this town. And we do this above and beyond what we do during our, our day. Most of us do. I have always said, and, and I do believe, that we need to, as a town, look at subcontracting somebody who is knowledgeable in how to market a town. How to market and get industry into this town. I don't think we have ever, ever tried that. It, it might fail, it might not work.
I think that's a great idea.
But I think we oughta, I, I think somewheres in the budget process, I think somewhere along the, someday, I would hope that, that we would really, really sit back and really take, you know, take the bull by the horns and get that expert into this town, because we do have so much to offer. We saw it last weekend, we saw it with the village plan that's gone in here, that's a lovely plan that we have for, for here. But we have nobody marketing this for us. And I'm just gonna throw that out there as, as a possibility for this board to consider, because I think we all are talking about the same thing. We need, we need to get money, 'cause we don't have any money. But we have all the great ideas and we can put them in every timeline that we wanna put them in. And it doesn't cost us anything to put them in those timelines, we can all do that. What costs us is that they keep going in the same. What costs us is that they keep going in the same timeline, 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 and we're just not getting anything done. So I wouldn't mind as a taxpayer spending a little bit more money in my taxes to pay for an effort to, to spend at least forty hours a week marketing my town. And that's all I'm going to, and I, I put it out there on the table again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Just one other thing, and I think that's a great idea, by the way. As, as I go to work each morning right now by the county farm, and I'm, John, there's a whole county budget and process that's in place, that line that they're digging up and putting in, I'm assuming that's a gas line? Is that something, as, as the town is aware of it and working as a partner with the county, is that something that we could have discussions with where, I'm assuming it's going to go right no further than the prison, just on their property? Is that something that in the future we could talk to them, saying, you're already doing this, you're already there, as we try to enhance our infrastructure? And I don't know where the funding would come from, but is that something that could be extended on? So then with that property across from the Irving, that may be sold and developed those five parcels of land as a potential mall or whatever it may be, strip mall or commercial property, there's a gas line that they could tie into? And it's another step that may come further and further out to the village or down Henry Bridge or wherever it may go, that while they're doing this project, we could tap into it perhaps at, at a lower cost to try to keep that infrastructure coming down the road? I don't know if the town knew the county was going to be doing that a while back, or is it, oh, we're just going to do this and we're just letting you know and we're starting next week? Were we aware of that gas line going through?
Well, I'm sure we must have been. I mean, you know, we'd have to coordinate with butters, if nothing else, and there must have been knowledge of it. But I hear what you're saying. You're right. It's an opportunity to piggyback on another project, keep our costs down. Of course, the problem is, we'd have to have the upfront money at that time.
That's understood.
In hand. You can't say, can you hold off on the gas line extension while we generate funds over the next twelve or eighteen months?
I wish it would come up this much.
Carlos, a while ago, somebody was looking at the property right there at the far end of the back road, and it was discovered that Manchester was not going to allow any trucking through that area. And somebody was going to have to start negotiations to get that taken care of, either by changing the access at the road or, or getting some, some requirements removed. And I don't know that anything has ever been done about that, but there's other-
I think this board sent a letter.
That was a painful exercise.
Yeah, that was a pretty dirty hand they dealt to us. But it has been. We've sent them letters, the City of Manchester, we've reached out to say, you know, let's get together and talk about this because, you know, you've hamstrung us in one of the few areas in town where we can see some real commercial development occur.
There's another area, too, over at St. Anselm's Drive on the, this would be on the west side of the road and back of the junkyard. There's some land up in there that somebody was proposing to develop, but the only access was through Bedford. And for some reason, there was, there were some restraints from the town of Bedford at the, at the time, so that one didn't go ahead either.
Yeah, it's pretty tough to bring in commercial business when-
Yeah.
-the town who controls the road access says, you can't bring trucks in-
Yeah.
-in these hours. It's-
I could clear, I, I've actually been working with Jim McClellan of McClellan Machine, who owns that property to, next to, next to the junkyard. That was a federal, federal-funded bypass road or, or highway, whatever they call it.
Limited access.
That was twenty-five or thirty years ago. I had a meeting with Commissioner of DOT a couple of years ago. He's resigned, or he left.
Campbell?
No, Campbell.
Campbell, oh, yeah.
Right, so I had a meeting with him, and I had a, I had a long discussion with him about, about doing that with Jim McClellan. What we would like to do is put some sort of an access into there, because right now the only access is a right-of-way at the junkyard's driveway off of Shirley Hill. We don't want to, and, and it's going to cost him, he's estimated a million dollars from his property to bring a wide enough rotor down and drop it off onto Shirley, which I think is a bad idea, and we all seem to believe that. We don't want industrial trucks coming in and out of Shirley Hill intersection. So we'd like to leave that residential, actually close that off as an access, and open up right there, right on the Goffstown side of the power line, let's say, put in some sort of an access in there with a shorter road. It will cost them less to develop it, but we're working on that, and actually that crosses over to the benchmark building, which is owned by St. Anselm's, of which I don't believe they're paying taxes on that because it's eighteen acres of unbelievable, you know, it's eighteen acres of unbelievable land, but as long as they keep it as storage for a tax-exempt status, they'll keep it that way. So that would, but we do have drawings, and we have them with PM, no, I want to say McKay, no.
TF Moran.
TF Moran. And we, we're going through our process with the Goffstown Industrial Corp., for instance. And we were talking about ways to develop that property. We have beautiful drawings of a hotel, of a, of a, of a function center, of some stores, some shops with industrial buildings across the street next to the junkyard. I mean, it's a whole area planned out, again, straight shot to the airport. We have, I mean, it's one of the best highway airports.
Beautiful.
Manchester, all these things.
Sure.
The other thing, if I could just take another sidewalk, is we know that casino expanded gambling is coming to a vote. I got to tell you that I'm not crazy about supporting that legislation the way it is, the way it is, or almost any other way it is. But if it does happen to pass, and I'm having, if I'm on the, on the minority side of that, and it does happen to pass, it's coming, and it's going to be here because the governor's going to sign it. So, that is my understanding. So that's going to open up opportunities for areas. So we've got to also, whether we want it here, whether it's going to, if it comes to New Hampshire, it's going to come somewhere. So the opportunities for the, the back road, the, that area, for instance, I mean, just five hundred acres of county land. I know this is, you know, this is out there, but the thought of, of, if it's legalized, it's opportunity. I mean, you can, we can fight opportunity if we want, but they're going to be looking for areas, and we do certainly have some areas. Not that I'm crazy about supporting it in any way, believe me, but if it's here, somebody's going to get it.
Well, I think the future lies in commercial development because you have places that are open during the day, the offices are at work, and at night, everybody goes, goes home, and you aren't adding more children to the already overloaded situations, and this is, this is where our arrow should be aimed.
I don't think you'll find many people who'll take issue with that or dispute that.
Yeah.
Again, it's, the challenge is getting there. Where do you get the money to start it all? Are there, are there other folks who want to comment who haven't necessarily had a chance to, or just don't want to dominate it too much in any one particular area? So if there are other folks who want to comment on other aspects of what their challenges and-
I'd just like, who pushes this forward? Which board does that? Who's in charge of looking at infrastructure? Who does it? Is it the planning board? Is it zoning board of adjustment? Is it the board of selectmen? Who comes up with these plans?
Well, I mean, I presume that's a function of our planning department. I mean, this is where it starts. I mean, it's all about planning. It starts with planning, it moves on to engineering, it moves on to financing, and then moves on to construction. But without a plan, you know, it's really hard to, to bring this, to bring this together. I mean, there needs to be a plan, whatever that plan might be. You know, we do have a planning department, we have a planning board, they talk, discuss this. I know I've been involved in, I was on the planning board for many, many years, and this always came up, and we always wrestled with it.
And you did nothing. I'm asking you, how do we get something done?
No, we, I wouldn't say we didn't do anything. We identified areas in town, and, and we've talked about them here. We've talked about the junkyard property, we've talked about the one on back road. That did come to fruition. We've talked about the property that St. A's owns, but, so, you know, I mean, the, the general plan is in a lot of people's minds, but, you know, again, how, how do you get there?
That's the question I'm asking. You're saying it's a dollar value involved in it. What's, how do you get to that dollar value? Okay, we've got a piece of property in Grassmere that's owned by the town. We now know gas isn't that far away, it's at the county farm, right? Sewer's up on Mass Road, the water's right there, we own a perfect piece of property, it's nice and flat. I mean, what else do we need?
Money.
Okay, how much? That's one of my questions. I'll have a number boy in a week.
The county employees look up with that.
Go anywhere, so you know what kind of a number.
Nick, wait a minute, Nick wants to-
But I think maybe that piggybacks on to what Tess was saying earlier. We meet every year, we have these meetings, and then we kind of go away and we come back the next year. Maybe one board, and I'm going to volunteer, this board maybe, has kind of organized this. Maybe it's somebody's responsibility to take all of the ideas and all of the concerns that came out, distill them down, put them into a guideline or a plan for the next year, addressing each of the various committees and boards and say, okay, we want to concentrate this year on trying to increase that industrial area on 114. How can we do that? Planning, we'd like you to resurrect all those tools. Remember when we had the Tiff district that failed? Let's look at that again. Can we use that to try to develop that land? Sewer, what can you do? Can you give us concrete estimates on what it would cost? Kind of use all of your ideas, but then go back to your expertise, but say, for the next year, this is the roadmap we want to follow. This is our goal, and next year we'll come back and look at what we did and say, okay, we fell flat on our face, but maybe we need to change and go in a different direction. But I, I think one board or some entity, and maybe the board of selectmen because we are the, the governing body, needs to set that direction and, and the guidelines and at least have a roadmap, start somewhere.
And I think these discussions, these healthy discussions is, is a great starting point, but let's plant the seed, but make sure that it grows and that, again-
So we're going to have that planned in sixty days? Do we have a timeline on that?
Yes.
I love what Nick just said, and it makes the notion of coming next year make sense because it often doesn't make sense. However, when, when Charlie, Charlie, Char, I don't really know him, but the name tag's very good, tells you. When he asked about, does anybody know about the gas coming in? I heard a couple of guys here who know that it's state, it's a state project, so we don't have to know. So can we tag on to you that someone pays attention to what the state's doing? Somewhere the state had to have-
It's a, it's a state highway, so they only had to coordinate with the state.
But somewhere they had to have made notice that they were going to be doing that. And someone, they don't tell anybody, they just go get a shovel.
It's their state.
I understand it's their state, but they-
It's our state, we just-
But it's our money, and if they're not having to notify that they're starting a project that runs through our community, then, John, take that back to Congress.
It's a county project.
That's what I thought, and that's how I started, but then you guys said-
It's in the state right-of-way, but it's a county project.
Right. Could, could it be that we could just reach out to the county then and say, you're in our town?
Yeah.
It's the county, you're in our town, can you just be a good partner and neighbor? And just tell us. Give us, if this is going to happen in eighteen months to two years, as we're saying, then these groups can meet and come up with, and maybe find some funding to extend that another two miles. That's huge. So that might give us the opportunity for that flat land in Grassmere, we may have someone, and now we've got the infrastructure to tie it in. There's a victory.
And if you turn around and say, and you actually have a plan that says, this is how much it's going to cost sewer, this is how much it's going to cost gas, this is how much everything, and you turn around and say to the voters, this is a huge project that in five years from now, you, your taxes would, I bet your voters would sit there and say, hey, you know what, let's bond this, it makes sense. But without anything there, legitimate numbers, or any cooperation or anything that's together, then why bother?
Who wants to go county meet?
In the dark of night, on-
More importantly, let's go county meet for us. Let's go, meeting.
Yes, I've got two points to bring up. About a year ago, the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission authored a, a build-out design of what this town looks like if everything was built according to how zoning would allow it. The one feature in that whole plan that impressed me as the, where development is going to occur, that I never had imagined it, was another mile down the road from what Charles is speaking of. It's the area around Irving, Irving Gas Station, Taitrow Drive. That-
Shell station.
That, excuse me.
Shell station.
Shell station, Taitrow Drive. That region and the hillside behind there was fully developed, much more than I could ever imagine. And once again, it needs infrastructure to do that, but there is sewer, there's water, there could be gas very easily. We've seen how quickly it gets installed. And, second point, we know from the newspaper that perhaps in three years, there may not be the county, a state prison on the county land, which, you know, that facility is rented by the state, so the, the county will definitely be doing something different with that parcel. And we ought to be aware of, here in the town, of what they're expecting to do, whether it's a small commercial development that is rented out and therefore revenue into the county. And we, we know, when they do, when they do turn county land over to a commercial enterprise, it's, it becomes taxable on our, our rolls. But we ought to be aware of how that development is going to proceed from the county vision.
Southern New Hampshire Region Planning, Regional Planning Commission just started a regional sharing project for all of the communities in the Southern New Hampshire region to get together and try to figure out how best we can work together to regionalize, to share our assets. Hillsborough County is sitting there with us, so I have these questions to ask them, how we can best work together as, as neighbors, so I will address these, they won't go unanswered.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sitting here listening to all of this, excuse me, and I'm wondering, I know part of our tax base is the county tax. What's the county do for us?
Nursing home.
Nursing home, sheriff, courts.
And that's about it?
Yeah.
Well, my understanding is they're going through the same downshifting as we are.
But they've got a surplus. I remember.
But also to Tess's comment, when was the last time that somebody from the county came in and talked to the board of selectmen at one of your meetings? I watch the board meetings every Monday night, and I can't remember the last time that there was a county commissioner here to make any kind of presentation. I've seen state reps, I've seen state senators, I've seen, and we'll see, I think it's next Monday night, representative about this 293, exit six and seven business, which I'm looking forward to hearing. But I can't remember in the last three or four years seeing anybody come in from the county to tell you, this is what we do for you as a member of the county. Why not? We're paying our taxes to them. They should be accountable to us for what those, what those taxes pay, and not to say, oh, it's the nursing home, and it's the sheriff's department. Give me a little bit more than that.
Or if it could be a true partnership, that we're bringing that gas line in as a county because we want to enhance these buildings, because the prison will be, more than likely be transferred up to Concord to create an efficiency for the state, having it up on State Street across from the penitentiary, and we would like to bring business in here, and we need your help, Goffstown, because we can help each other. Now, I'm assuming if, if a business moves into one of those office spaces, that is it taxable on the inside where we get the benefit?
Yes.
That is true. It'd be a partnership. And I think that's where I think the county can step to the plate and let us know, the gas line's coming in for this reason. The prison's going away for this reason. This is what we wanna do to enhance that property and we wanna partner with you." Because if you can help us drive it to bring new businesses to this community in some of those older mill buildings that are being renovated, we both win. They get the benefit of filling the property. We get the benefit of having a new business in town, a new partner we can be with that's gonna help offset the residential tax base by being a commercial tax. And, and I think that's what the county needs to do. And Nick, I know you were writing those notes down. They need to partner with us. And we can partner with them. And it could be a great relationship. But we need to know, besides driving down the street and there it is, what's going on? We don't even know. And they may have these grand plans in place that...
Nobody knows about.
Just tell us about it. And you know what? If the Economic Development Council and other groups here know it, then we can even help talk to other potential businesses. Are you aware of this? Oh, we are now. And we can partner with the county. And if they wanna move the prison and, and open up these buildings and office space, let's help them fill it because we win too. I think that'd be great.
Or maybe, piggybacking off Kathy's comment, maybe we share with the county the cost of an economic developer, someone who will push that particular area in Goffstown and commercial development there. So it's not all on us, it's not all on them, but we have dedicated individual doing that.
Dave, nice to hear.
I feel embarrassed now because the Rail Trail Committee has a representative of one of the commissioners from the county. So if I can do it on this committee, maybe I think the board of selectmen can also challenge one of the commissioners to attend once in a while and update the, the selectmen on what's going on.
Well, we've heard a lot from you folks and we certainly appreciate it. Certainly, these are challenging times, but that shouldn't stop us from developing a plan, charting our course forward. There's a lot of things it'll be dependent upon, not the least of which is money. But it's gotta start with a plan. Acknowledge your concerns and, like I say, we videotape this whole meeting. We're going to transcribe it down to minutes and we'll get those out to you folks to make sure we've captured all of your concerns. We're gonna discuss these as, as a board of selectmen to try and prioritize these things and to work with various committees and representatives at your state level, county level, whatever it takes, to, to try and put a plan together. You know, as I always say, the first thing you need to do is you have to recognize you need a plan. I think we recognize that we need a plan. The next thing to do is to make that plan come together. It's a big challenge, but we've got a lot of hardworking people here with a lot of, a lot of knowledge and a lot of experience and a willingness to, to move our community in the right direction. I think we all have very similar thoughts and ideas on how we need to do that. And so it's a challenge, but it's a challenge we have to take up. And as we've said, no time like the present to start, rather than just kicking the can down the road, coming back here another year, having the same old discussions again. So your input's been valuable. Does anybody have any closing comments they wanna make that's burning? Otherwise, I wanna thank you all for, for showing up and sharing your thoughts and your ideas and your concerns and hopefully helping to light a fire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.